At this time, I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, June 11th, 2025 Board of Commissioners to order. We don't have anybody to say grace or pledge allegiance, do we? But we can at least...
Special meeting, so we can do it anyway.
Pledge allegiance at least.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll lead us in a prayer.
Mr. Speaker, okay.
Oh, we're still standing.
Reverse order. Father, we thank you for the blessings of being in this country that we live, and we ask that you would grant us grace and mercy and wisdom as we abide over the business of Curry Tuck County. We ask in your son's name. Amen.
Okay.
All right, Agenda Item 1 is...
A reading of the...
Mr. Chair, I would like our attorney to read the ethics awareness statement.
Okay. Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Curry Tuck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
If I, and I don't know, that's a fact, if I vote for the budget and my salary is raised, which I'm unaware if it's going to be raised or not raised, if I figure the formula out, I think it's probably under $1,000 raise, so...
Per week?
No, heck no.
Per hour?
Yeah.
So what I would recommend with that, because you do work for the sheriff's office, and tonight that is up for possible adoption, the budget for the sheriff's office and the possible adoption of the pay plan, the new pay plan, I would recommend the board hold a mock vote of those two items after you leave the room, and then come back in and do a full vote of everything.
I know, so we've done that the last...
So there's no appearance of conflict.
Years, last two or three years?
We've done that the last two years at least.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, it's not, you know, if it was a dollar, some yahoo would probably say, oh, he got a dollar, I'm gonna buy a candy bar and give it to somebody, but it's, if I figured, if I figured the formula out right, it's very insignificant, but it would be, so...
Yeah, that's why I would just recommend to avoid any kind of appearance of conflict, to hold that mock vote, and then you come in and do a full vote.
Or donate it, or...
Yeah, and the board can always excuse you from voting if they feel like they want to do that, that would require a motion and a vote, but in my opinion, I think the mock vote covers that appearance of conflict.
Okay. Would you rather us excuse you entirely?
If I did the formula right, I mean, like I said, I think it's around $1,000 bucks. I mean, if my character, $1,000 is, you know, I'll donate the $1,000 to kids first.
Well, I think what we've done in the past is sufficient to avoid that. We, as a board, will decide on those matters that affect you directly, and then you can vote on the overall...
Overall, okay.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's what we did.
Yeah, we did excuse you for the sheriff's...
Whatever we did the last two years, I mean, I don't think I got...
That's exactly what we've done the last two years.
...allegated on Facebook.
I just wanted to make sure that you were...
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't want to do something, but I mean, like I said, I know, per the school of government, I have a duty to vote.
That's right.
So, I mean, like I said...
All right, so be it.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we've been through the budget about 13 times, we've held two public hearings, and how many work sessions? I guess we've held, what, three work sessions, two public hearings, and now it's time for the board to make a decision on the budget.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just really quickly, I've had some, I guess, some questions regarding the wastewater, wastewater, the convenience site fees, and I know that some probably some board members here knew that aren't familiar with the study we had a few years ago, and the costs associated with it, and how we were doing a slow increase, and if the county manager could just take a minute just to kind of enlighten the new board members as well, and maybe the public out there, why there might be a slight increase, which has been the past few years on the, on the convenience site fees, I believe that's correct.
Yes, so back in 2021, a solid waste rate study was conducted by Raft Hillis, and the recommendations came back to increase the solid waste, the conveni, excuse me, the availability fees annually, so those increase annually this year, and that information is available on page 39 of the PDF document in the budget narrative. So this year, the availability fee for, it's basically everywhere except for door-to-door pickup in Corolla is increasing from $256 to $265, and then in Corolla, the Southern Outer Banks, door-to-door, it is increasing from $467 to $483.
The, as far as that, the, that was, was that the presentation the lady from Charlotte came and gave where the fees are set?
That's correct.
Yeah, and we were noticing, so giving cost on our recyclables, waste, waste pickups and all that, so, you know, it was costing the county more, so we had to make some adjustments, I believe, so just so you know, it's been like that for some...
So this was a policy that was adopted a couple of years ago?
Correct.
Okay, to keep maintaining the solid waste system on fiscal, solid ground?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Did the same for water and sewer, and we'll actually, in the upcoming fiscal year, we'll conduct a, a new rate study for solid waste and for water and wastewater.
And these are user fees?
Correct.
So they add valor on taxes not being proposed to change?
Correct.
Okay.
And those are fees, that lady did that presentation, they are set, I mean, it was not...
There were recommendations that were made to the board, that the board adopted, yeah.
Okay, I remember that. Um, I got a couple, so who's, go ahead.
That's all I have.
I talked to, I was talking to Rebecca, I talked to Melissa, as well as I talked to David Hill from the pay study stuff. I brought up the other thing, and like I said, and this is something that I have to exclude myself from, it's, I'm not looking at it for me, I couldn't tell you my exact for mine, it's, this is for employee, if the funding category or how we were doing it was the, I believe when you said it was like 45% in year one, or one point, whatever it was, the million, which, the whole thing was 3.6?
It depends, it, it's hard to say, I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't break it down over, into percentages over a year, but, let's see here, what, what was included and manager proposed was $1,665,777, excuse me, across all funds, and costed general fund $1,168,219. So that was manager proposed. Then there was additional proposal that was sent to you all last week, which builds out the, the years beyond year eight and carried forward to year 45 with a significantly reduced factor, which did increase the budget, would increase the budget.
And if somebody made it 45 years for the county, they get like a mental health award or whatever, they get committed for 30 days in a facility.
So the recommendations, we were able to finalize the numbers based on the recommendation that was shared with you last week, so it would be an increase of $144,323 across all funds, the general fund would be $70,123, that would be the increase, for, I'll call out specifically Ocean Sands Water and Sewer and the TDA budgets, just so you understand the increases in those budgets. So in Fund 60, which is Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District, the increase would be $881, and then in Fund 15, which is the Tourism Development Authority, the increase would be $4,727.74.
All right, and my thing on the pay study would be, I guess, their implementation program where we had talked about was like three years, three years, whatever, which would technically be 25 months, because July would be one, and then the next July would be one in one month, and then the next July would be two in one month, so it would be 25 months. I had asked if it, and I emailed it as well as, what, maybe four or five days, three or four days ago, the other of like if we could do that in 13, 13 months instead of 25 months, was that, I mean, and obviously, if you pay something 13 months, it's going 25, I know it's going to be a little bit higher, but I mean, just to, because if we don't, at the market value of what, just, and I'm not picking counties or cities or whatever, they're paying this, and we're not paying that, and then we just further sag behind and behind and behind, where then we'd have to do a cola or something, so my request was if we could do it in 13 months instead of 25.
What's your answer in year four?
In year four?
I mean, we can't keep escalating every year.
Well, if we don't...
At some point, you, you reach, you know...
Oh, yeah, I mean, well...
Or at market value, and you can't keep escalating, so what happens in year four?
I don't know, I never saw it on paper, so I can't say. But I mean, like, I will say that, I mean, if you don't, maybe you have to pay the piper. I mean, and I'm not saying like, and I'm not, this is not based on myself or anything, but if I called 911, the two gentlemen in the back, I want the best of the best to come to my house, everybody does, if I need the public works, I want, you know what I'm saying, and so I just was curious if we could do it in 13 months versus to 25 months, and I know, I know it costs more, and I, like I said, I don't know, when you make interest on reserves, I'm not saying, let's, you know, put it all on red at Portsmouth at the casino, but that was my, if, if we could go for the 13 months, I would be able to eat the, the budget a lot better.
So we, if I could interject, we do have a rough estimate, rough estimate for what that would cost, and I ask the assistant manager to come up and share those figures.
Sure, so if we were to move that factor to the final .025, reaching a value of 100% by the midpoint eight years, that fund's ten cost for fiscal year 27 would be $1,385,511, and across all funds to fully implement in the second year would be $1,924,847.
So it was 1.2 or 1.4 for year two?
The way it is now.
The way it is now, 1.2 or 1.4, I believe.
Implementation in fiscal year 27 across all funds was $1,029,000.
So it would be additional seven? Why, I didn't hear your first number, I'm sorry.
Across all funds would be $1,924,847.
Additional nine.
Basically another million.
$1,000, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's just my, I mean, if not, we're gonna, if not, we're gonna have to do a cola or do something, if there, and I'm just saying, if the trend...
If we got to do a cola, what's the purpose of even doing this pay study? I thought that was the purpose of the pay study, was to bring people to the market rate. If it's not gonna do it, then what are we doing?
Well, let me ask you...
I think we are bringing them to the, and I don't mean in a, I think we are, I mean, like I said, I've done, and I'm, those two words, I don't like anymore, pay and study, but, you know, like, they've helped me, both of them, as well as I've talked to David, I think the pay study, the pay study is, and David's a super smart guy, he's a super nice guy, too, but I think, you know, it's how we're implementing it, I mean, and I, nobody in here wants to pay more taxes, I mean, there's, I don't want to pay more taxes, nobody does, nobody wants to raise taxes.
Well, that's who has to pay the piper, you use that phrase, Kevin?
Well, yeah, but I'm saying...
Somebody has to pay the piper, it's not you and me, it's the whole county.
Oh, I mean, yeah, mine was a lot higher last year, I wanted to fight myself in the parking lot when I paid the bill, but I'm just saying, why do we have reserves? That's all I'm saying, we make interest on reserves, if it's $900,000, if a cola, 2% cola is what, off the top of my head, a million five, a million six?
Are you saying that it's going to take us eight years to get to midpoint with what we're proposing?
New people. Is that correct?
No, so, moving forward, and it, the goal under the new pay plan is if someone starts at the minimum, which they would when they come in, if they're hired, the goal is to get them to midpoint by year eight.
People that are here would be at midpoint in three years, correct?
No, it depends on their time in the position.
Right, the factors.
Right. So we are slowing it down, so we are, we are slowing down the implementation by reducing that factor, so if you'll remember, when we talk, when we talk about the factor, we're talking about .025 is the fact, the, the factor is essentially 2.5% that it would take you if you start with us on day one, by the time you get to year eight, each year, you're gonna see a little bit of an increase to get to midpoint. So we are slowing that down a little bit by starting this year with a factor of .015, then next year, and this was a manager proposed, next year going to .020, and then the final year going to .025. So even someone who's here now won't be at midpoint within eight years, but they would be within the next three years, if they should be at midpoint.
And midpoint is market value?
Correct.
Correct. But in eight years, that's gonna be a whole different ballgame, don't you think, that the salaries, it will not be...
And that goes to my next question, we have a pay study, and we're implementing it for this coming year, next year, that's kind of like a living document, we can adjust that accordingly, if we have more savings or something changes, or if we get this, if we can explain and get this quarter set tax, sales tax passed, that's like 2.5 million dollars we can use for anything we want to, schools, salaries, whatever, then if that comes into play, then we might be able to readjust our strategy and thinking how fast we implement this, because we might find more funds, we might find more savings, and this is not set in stone for year after year, it can be adjusted correctly, am I correct on that? I mean, could it?
Sure, I mean, so there, there's a couple things to do there, also remember that the recommendation was that we move to 5% between grades, the proposed pay classification is 3% between grades, so we can also, once we get everyone to midpoint, start looking at increasing the differential between grades, which will, in essence, blow up the pay scale.
Yeah, I mean, after this year, it's not set in stone, it can be adjusted either way.
But we're, but I look at it this way, and this, like I said, this is not me, this is not my paycheck, I don't really care, I don't even know what I make, to be honest, I know my hourly rate, so I could probably multiply it, but my thing is, it's a great place to work, I'm a county employee, I'm thankful that I work here, I'm thankful of the staff and everything, it's a great place, but like, what people pay, what you have to pay to hire an AC guy, what Janet has to pay for real estate, can be different, you know, whatever, I mean, all I'm saying is, if we're behind, which we are, and if we have a plan to move it this way, David told me today, due to board turnover, due to this and that, he was like, typically at year three, everything gets changed anyway, be it good or bad, because you could have new commissioners, you could have, there's five educated people that have a vote on this, I've seen, I mean, I've seen stuff on paper that, where I've sat down with these two, and I've talked, you know, and other, but like, on paper, ours, the study, I had a book last time, and the time before, I think I've sat through two of these, I had a book, I don't want to vote for something, and I'm not against it, I think it's a great pay study, I will say that, and I think the budget's awesome, I think they've done a great, mainly you, done a great job on, on the funds and all that stuff, but the study, there's 430 county employees, and I would put it all on black in Portsmouth at the casino, that probably 50 of them understand it, and that'd probably be on a high number, because not everybody understands it.
How much time do we need for you and everybody else to understand it, do you think? Or you would think, a two weeks, a week, a year?
No, I'm not even saying that, I'm just saying, like, I mean, we've been talking about, and Paul called me earlier today and said, hey, so I talked to Melissa, I tried to, Rebecca, you were on the call, so, but like I said, and I'd sent an email, I'm just saying, like, this one was different because it is super complex, I think it's a great pay study, I really do, and I know there's different ways to fund it and all that stuff, and I'm not saying, hey, look, let's roll the dice and let's, you know, raise the taxes, I'm not, I don't want to raise taxes at all, but I'm just saying, I wanted to fund it in 13 months instead of 25 months to get the process, because it's, A, already, we're already behind, that, we're already told we're already behind.
I agree.
So, but we're gonna just continue to get further behind.
Well, if we can find it without raising taxes, that's, I was for, now, let me get to your point that you'd made, you said something about reserves, you're a business person, I'm a business person, I'm in business to make, you know, to cover my overhead and pay my, you know, have some profit, well, first thing they teach you in business, and if you're , is that you have to understand your overhead to know what your cost's gotta be. Okay, so, at the year, at the end of the year, if my business did well, and I can afford to do a one-time bonus or Christmas bonus, I might do that for the employees, I may not be able to do it next year, I can't count on that every year, but I'll try to if I have the money there. What I don't do is I'm not gonna use that to cover my, my employees' cost and wages every year, because that's an unknown factor, what that number, the final year number could be, so what I have to do, when I understand what my costs are, I have to go back and I have to say, okay, do my current charges cover my overhead to keep me in business? Because that's gonna be year after year after year, and I don't know what profits I'm gonna make at the end of the year, so you can't, could you do a one-time bonus for my employees? Absolutely, and if I can, I will, but I'm not gonna use that figure every year to compensate their yearly wages, because I'll go under if I do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you on that, and like I said, it's just, our money makes money, is what I'm saying.
It can, but then it can lose money.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, most of the time it makes money, typically every year, money's added to it, and I'm not saying, go hog wild on it, I'm just saying, and Selena can attest, she went to the citizens academies and the other stuff, I mean, we are very fortunate, Rebecca showed how we pay way less people, and we get the work done compared to other counties, we're efficient, I don't think there's a lot of waste in our budget, I know somebody on social media might say there is, but that's their opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, from, from, from A to Z, I think, like I said, it's solid, that, all I'm saying is, you, you know, we're, we are already behind, and I get, we have to slow it down because we're behind, and I'm not saying raise taxes, I'm not saying whatever, but our money makes money, and sometimes you gotta take some of your money to keep people and keep the turnover down, I mean, the jail is a perfect example, example, I don't work at the jail, in 18 months, I've replaced the jail times four more than, than we went through, and when we looked the other day at the study, me and, was it me and Melissa, I think it might have been me and Rebecca, we didn't have an employee that'd been there over a year, when, on, based on the formula, because we've got, nobody would, because it was so behind in pay.
So after, if we keep dipping in the reserves in your scenario, and we keep doing it year after year, because what you say is we're profitable, in five to eight years, all of a sudden, we're down to the bottom point, and we, I'm just saying, we are to keep what's required for the reserves that the county's required to keep, and we're right there at the threshold now, do we raise taxes, is that the point, we raise taxes in your scenario? I'm just asking.
No, I mean, I'm saying, I'm hoping we have some new business, I'm hoping we have some other things, whatever, I mean, you know, we could hit rock bottom and nobody go to Corolla, we could, you know, we could have all kinds of, we could have 15 lawsuits in 2026.
We could have a hurricane.
Yeah, we could have a hurricane, I mean, there's a lot of...
And then we lose all of our reserves, and we're done.
And that's what the reserves are for.
Well, and the reserves is, we are beyond, we're healthy reserves, and I mean, like I said, if you ask what that figure is, it's like you're asking somebody if they have some kind of disease, because nobody likes them.
No question, we are now, no question, we are, we are...
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, like I said, it doesn't affect me at all.
Sounds like to me, we should just not do it then, and just study it for another year, so everybody's comfortable.
I mean, we could just do a standard 2% cola and let, and study it some more.
Take out the pay study.
Just take the pay study out, if nobody's comfortable with it.
And let's, let's study it some more.
If you don't, if you're not comfortable, and you're gonna, you're working under it, and you think the employees aren't comfortable with it, then maybe we shouldn't do it.
Let's hold off a year, and let's study it some more, and see what we can do better.
I know we spent a lot of money for the pay study, I don't want to be the first board that ever doesn't fund the pay study, I don't believe that's ever happened to my knowledge, I wish I would have.
I mean, that we, we already funded the pay study, you just implemented.
Implement it.
Okay.
And we've already paid it, but I mean...
It's already been funded, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not over, correct?
What do you mean, it's not over?
The pay study, I mean, there's more years down, there's, I mean, we still have a working contract with David, correct?
Our, our plan is in the upcoming fiscal year to, yes, to contract him, with him again, continue that relationship.
Very smart guy, very, I mean, very, I mean, like I said, I'm not, I'm not against it, I just, if we could implement it 13 months instead of 25 months, that's all, that's all I brought up.
Everybody needs to remember, in, in next year's budget, we have a new school that's gonna be an additional almost $2 million right off the top to operate, right off the, regardless of what we do this year, that's $2 million additional.
And every year thereafter.
And every year thereafter.
Reoccurring.
And we have put money in the budget for, to help, it's not as much as we wanted, but an amount for teacher supplements in this year, that's a recurring every year. We have funded the teacher assistance, we've funded a lot of stuff.
Capital.
That's, that's gonna occur every year going forward, it's not gonna go away, it's gonna increase, and I, me, I'm just one, I'm just one of seven, but this commissioner is not gonna vote for anything that creates a pay, I mean, a tax increase this year, or creates a tax increase next year, or a tax increase a year after that, I am not voting for anything that will do that, period, no, that's just it, period, so, if we can't, if we can't come to an agreement on this pay study, we can, we can, if you're not comfortable with it, and the employees, as you say, don't understand it, aren't comfortable with it, we can just pull it out this year, and we can try again next year, and we can start over and do something different, if that's what you think the, is, is the answer, or the board thinks is the answer, I'm not gonna do anything that injects uncertainty, the employees aren't happy, although I've talked, employees are pretty darn happy, the ones I've talked to.
Oh, it's a great, I never, it's a great place to work, I didn't say that, that's not...
But if, if it's, if it's an issue and a problem, then we don't have to do it this year, we can just...
Well, we saved, we saved a couple dollars on this Diet Pepsi that I got out of the refrigerator, because it's two months old, so that was pretty good.
So, so...
That helped your immunity.
I know, I'm just kidding, that was a joke.
Do you know what percentage of our employees will be at market with the implementation of this pay plan?
Do I know, I have, under the...
I know you said it will take the new people eight years to get to market.
Right.
But our current employees?
Do I know a percentage? I do know.
Roughly?
An average, maybe?
No, I, I'm, no, I don't know that number, I think, yeah.
I honestly, I mean, and our employees have not seen where they're gonna be on the pay scale.
That's correct.
So I don't know how they can be happy or not.
Maybe we just wait, then.
Well, we, you know, we met with department heads, and we did share salaries with department heads, they saw them, and, and went through and explained with them how the pay study would be implemented, and they, they saw overall salaries, so, they were sent back with information that they could share with their staff, once the budget is adopted, if the pay study is approved, our plan is to provide department heads talking points to help, you know, assist them in explaining salaries to, to staff, but I think from our perspective, it's, it would be irresponsible to share a salary with a employee that has not been approved by the board, because it could change, and it has, it has changed in the last week, the way that we've implemented.
Yeah, it's changed a half dozen times in the last three weeks.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, just to your point, Janet, the last few weeks, the, the particular, individual salary has been adjusted up and down until we get this finalized.
I just want to say something about the budget, I think this budget is not gonna make anybody happy, but I think it's fair, it gives a little to a lot of people, it's not giving everybody everything they want, I know Dr. Lutz and the Board of Ed wanted 3,000 for teacher supplements, we did 500, I know county employees want it, funded it to, in, in 13 months.
I think I was the one that gave them that.
We did 25 months, I, I know that the, the Wave School wants $250,000, and the list goes on and on and on, we cannot responsibly give everything everybody wants and keep taxes where they are, when you talk about paying the piper, that is the taxpayer, that's you, me, that's people on fixed incomes, that's people already struggling month to month, that is everybody in the county, and this budget, which our, our staff did a great job of keeping taxes steady, fees have gone up, but we knew they were gonna go up from back in 2021, and everybody gets a little, that's, that's the fairest way to do it, we can't, we know we're gonna have $1.8 million next year, we don't know what the economy's doing, from the discussion at the district meeting, sales tax is down across the state, transfer tax and, and real estate is slowing down, we don't know what the future's gonna hold, and to me, it is... We don't know what the future's going to hold, and to me, it is irresponsible to drain our reserve funds when we don't know what's going to happen. So I think this budget is fair. I don't think it's delightful and wonderful to anybody, but it is fair. And that is what I am prepared to vote on tonight. And that's all I got to say.
Also, every nonprofit in the county came and asked for big increases this year. And we had to tell a lot of people no this year because the board has raised taxes three out of the last four years. I had a gentleman come up to me near about in tears saying he doesn't know if he's going to be able to keep his property if the taxes go up anymore. People just cannot afford more taxes. We are not a candy store. We have to be responsible to everybody, which means sometimes you have to say no, or sometimes you have to say, okay, here's the alternative. Sometimes you can say yes, but you can't say yes to everything, every time, and then tell folks that we're going to raise your taxes. They just will not tolerate any more tax increases in this county. And I, for one, if I'm the only person that votes no to anything that increased taxes, I will gladly fall on my sword and be the only one that votes no.
Well, I don't think you're the only one. I mean, I, I'm not voting to, to raise taxes either.
Anybody is.
But I, I am, I am concerned about some parts of this budget. You know, did the final budget give increases to all the nonprofits?
No. No. They didn't get any increases, a lot of them.
A lot of them?
I don't know that any of them got increases.
None of them. The only people that got increases in this budget are employees and the school system. And that's the only ones that I know that got increases in the budget. Is there anyone else in the budget that got increases other than county employees and the school system? I don't think so.
Well, you know, and, and well, go ahead.
I was just going to say, College of the Almaral.
Yeah, I was going to say, there was a few.
Oh, schools.
Yeah, education, correct.
Didn't we give some more to one of the food banks or something too? I thought that was, are we adding one or something? Did we add one?
Nope.
I think there was one asking for one through another department's budget, but.
Well, you know, and, and you bring up the schools, and again, you know, my mother retired from the schools. Remember she taught there?
Yeah.
My daughter's working with the schools. I coached, I mean, you know, it's, the schools, I was a bus driver too, for Lord have mercy on me.
You were in the band.
Yeah, I was in the band too. But anyways, you know, we have a charter school asking for a ton of money over there. Me personally, I'm, you know, I'm sorry. I mean, I know they're over there, but we, in my opinion, we take care of our own first. And if we give any extra money out, it should be to our own schools first before we start giving out the charter schools. But that's my opinion, because our school systems can use everything we can. You know, it's not everything that they wanted, but any extra money we can give out, I think should go to the schools first. And the charter schools, you know, I'm sorry, that one over there is asking for money, but I just, I mean, I'd rather give it to our school system versus them. Any, I don't even care if it's two cents. That's me.
Well, I do feel like that charter school serves a great purpose.
It does.
In its location, and I think they do a good job. And I did talk with Dr. Lutz, and he agreed that, you know, $60,000 was an accurate figure as far as what they are saving the school system by not having to transport children every day over there.
And the county, and our school system has to give them some money anyways. And we have Dare County students that go to that school, and Dare County, and I don't see Dare County adding up any additional money.
I'm guessing they have to pay tuition, but.
Well, but that, but that, you know, I don't see Dare County giving, okay, well, math, but you do, Kurt, Doc, that ain't happening.
Sandra, did, the amount of money that you talked about, what they had received this year, was that based on the per pupil funding like it is for the Currituck County Public Schools?
I just sent an email to Susan Mizell at the school system, and she said, this is what it is. So I, I believe that's how it's done, but I can't guarantee that.
That's all I have.
It's somebody's radio.
That's all I have for now.
Like I said, it's not mine. Mine's in the other vehicle. Like, what about, okay, let's, you brought up Wave School. Let's bring up Wave School.
Yeah, that, that was my opinion.
I mean, what's the number that, I mean, is there a number that anybody on, I mean, they save us 60 grand. I mean, I'm down to give, you know, give them that if they're saving.
What, what was the final number that was put in the budget for the Wave School?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Oh, I thought we had something.
The board has not given the manager direction. All we've said is we're all over the place and has not given the manager any direction. I think a number that was, um, uh, kind of discussed and kind of agreed to was maybe $50,000 out for capital out of the reserves. But then they have to give a promissory note if they get county money, which Tony told me they would agree to that. But I think that was the number that was agreed on or discussed. But nobody has told the manager anything definitive unless I'm mistaken.
And that would be almost like a loan they'd be signing for.
Right.
But it wouldn't have to be paid back unless.
They go out.
They go out of business.
Or whatever.
Right, that's correct. Well, I'm, I'm prepared. Once again, everybody gets a little. I'm prepared to, since they save us 60,000, I am prepared to meet that in capital, not out of the general fund, but capital.
I think, does it come out of the general fund?
Excuse me, just to clarify, any, any funding that's provided to the Wave School must come from the general fund.
But it's for capital, right? When we, when we give that money to them, it is designated for capital, correct?
It's not current expense.
Yes, that's correct.
But I mean, if, but we can take $60,000, like you said, at a reserve and put in general fund, $60,000 to give them, correct?
It would be fund balance appropriated from the general fund.
Okay. So.
For capital.
Yes, it for, I, I believe the request was for, funding for fixtures and furniture.
Right.
F, F, and E. And that gives them a jump start. Like, like she said, everybody gets something.
And then maybe Dare County will chip in.
Don't hold your breath. They've already passed their budget.
I know.
$242 million.
Yes.
Wow.
And how many employees do they have? Almost 1,000? And we have 400 and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, like I said, I don't think we're, I don't think we're.
And then they have municipalities too, you're right.
Yeah, they have all the, and they have those employees too. They're not considered county employees.
So, all right, let's continue the discussion. Who else has something else to add to it?
Well, we had a couple of positions that we were concerned about with the study. And maybe, you know, correct me in wording this, Mr. O'Neill, Chairman O'Neill. We don't want them, what, is it suppression that you call it?
Compression.
Compression. Have we got those taken care of?
So the, the information.
That's what the study does.
Right, that, that was shared with you. Here we go.
There was a couple.
Okay, so, and I'll just read this directly from the email. So, so you all expressed concerns about employees who have greater than eight years in a position. So we weighed those concerns and offered the following considerations. We extended the years factor out to year 45 and applied a conservative increase in each year beyond year eight. What this achieves is that someone in a position with 20 years of experience would be compensated greater than someone in a position, or excuse me, in the same position with nine years of experience, rather than stopping that progression along the bell curve at year eight. Because we are applying very conservative approaches, most employees will still not be at the midpoint this year. This does, however, address any concern that an individual is not being recognized for long-term service in a position.
So most of our employees will not be at the midpoint?
That's correct.
But they're going to see a.
Market value. I don't like to say a midpoint.
They'll be, they'll see a significant increase from where they're at though. Probably more than 2%.
Unless they're already there.
Correct.
Yes.
If you're already there.
Some people are there.
Yeah.
Dare County did a 3% cost of living.
If you're already there, then you won't see a raise.
That's correct.
Look, are we looking at, are we looking at correcting the pay imbalance? Are we just looking to make sure everybody gets something? I mean, you got to decide.
I'm just asking questions because I haven't seen it.
I am too. I'm trying to understand, are we trying to correct the compression issue and get people on a path to market value? Or are we just trying to give everybody something this year? If, if that's what we want to do, then just do the 2% and just throw this away.
Well, we're, we're also trying to be fair, and, you know, we've heard, I've heard from a couple that are like, this is, you know, I'm way below this county and that county, and I, I don't think the study is addressing that. Well, that's what the point of the study is. And the point of the study, it compared us to counties around us and counties similarly situated, like Transylvania County, Brunswick County, correct? They were part of the study.
Yeah, I'd have to go back to, to review the exact.
The exact county, Passaport County. I mean, you know, I think, I think the idea is, no, they're not making what Chesapeake makes. They may not be making what Dare County, so if they're just calling their Dare County counterparts, that's, that's not what the point of this pay study is. The pay study's not looking at one salary.
Yeah.
It is a study of many different similarly situated entities when it arrived at this. And, and it, and, and the company that did it, they, that's what they do. They are out there trying to go through and make the study as fair and as balanced as possible. That's what we paid them for. That's what the point of the study is, to recruit and retain. And we do that by trying to stop compression. We do that by rewarding time and service longevity and performance. Do we do it overnight? Well, we can't. That is fiscally irresponsible. But we do that trying to slowly move the county forward and being as fiscally conservative and holding the line on taxes. That's, that's the point of the pay study.
I, I think the pay study, the guy, David, is awesome. He's very smart. I've had good conversations with him. Like I said, I just had questions because I, I hadn't seen it on paper.
Okay.
I mean, that's the only thing that, I mean, I.
I think.
So we take it out of the budget. We just take it out of the budget this year.
It's very clear that we, Currituck County, wants to invest in their employees after giving a 4%, 6%, or 8% pay increase last year, and now the salary study trying to implement it this year.
Janet, not only that, is two years ago, we took the sheriff's department individually and adjusted pay scales for the sheriff's department because we were told we had to get them up higher. Remember that?
Because you couldn't, well, he, Matt paid, Matt paid the sheriff, paid for it out of his own budget. He cut stuff. I mean, like, I mean, but you, the quality of service, if you can't have somebody respond to your house because you have a domestic and you don't have enough officers.
Correct, but I mean, but that's a year, but that's a year to year funded now because it was adjusted. So every year that new rates, yeah, we fund them yearly.
Like I said, I'm not against the pay study. I'm not against it. I, I had a lot of questions about it because people ask me questions. I'm an approachable person.
Well, either we do it or we don't. I mean.
It sounds like to me. I, I can't even vote in on it anyway. I'm not supposed to vote on it. So I'm the one asking questions because of, if I'm getting a raise, so, I mean, I'm not against it. I'm, I'm just, I'm asking questions. I'm not against it. I mean, that's why we're here.
But you're not going to vote for it as presented by the manager?
Can I even vote?
You're going to vote on the overall budget?
Overall budget, yes.
I can't vote on the sheriffs, which directly is my pick.
Correct.
Correct. Was, was it, I'm guessing it was not the pay study's idea to separate 911 from emergency management? That was something totally separate?
Yeah, that, that's an operational decision. That's correct.
Is that, is that happening?
That's in the recommended budget, yes. Yeah, yeah, I just, if I could just remind you of the recommendations from the pay study, because I don't want to confuse implementation with the actual recommendations of the pay study. The, the recommendations were to adopt the recommended pay plan and to assign each position to the market-supported pay grade. So how we move from our current pay plan to the new pay plan is the implementation. And there were several models that were shared with how to do that. So we have taken those models and we have developed how we will, with, with guidance from the consultant, how we will move from our existing pay plan to the new pay plan. But I think adopting the new pay plan that has the market-supported pay grades is, is the most crucial part. And then how.
Thought he getting a pay cut?
Absolutely not.
Is anybody dropping a pay grade? Any specific position dropping a pay grade that would result in, in a pay cut?
In a, in a cut in pay? No, no.
So nobody's getting a pay cut because the scale is being redone?
Correct.
It's just kind of a reset to move forward with?
Right, well, because we went from 66 grades to 46 grades. So there was a reduction in grades. That's correct.
It was too convoluted. There was lots of compression. But like I said, I'm, I sit right here. I'm not against the pay study. But I just had a lot of questions about it. That was, that was it. But like, I think it's awesome. I think it's a great, my implant, my questions were on implementation. That, that was it. But I do think, far as the relationship with David, I've sat in on the other ones. The one that we had before was garbage. The, was it the last one? Was the last one four years ago? Four or five years ago, the last one was terrible.
I think the final.
You had people leave because their job didn't have a, a pay. They had non-comparison. So then there was people that got nothing and that probably deserved it, but there was nobody to compare them to. That, whoever that company was, was terrible. I will say that. Go out on a limb. Mike, you remember that?
I do.
There was tons of jobs.
Yeah.
But this, this one I do, like I said, I just had questions on implementation. That's it. But I do think the long term for this is better for, for everybody, but just, I wanted to throw my 13 month instead of 25 month. And I don't want to raise taxes. I don't want to pay anymore.
As long as this gets implemented, you like the program is what you're saying.
I don't have an issue with the program. I do, but I do think the implementation, because we're going to get, but if we get behind, we're going to have to do a COLA. I mean, that's something you'd have to do.
Kevin, that's what I just said. Every year, every year when we look at our budget, if we have to make an adjustment, this is not set in stone.
That's right.
This is this year's budget. Next year, if we say, hey, we need to do, hypothetically, we need to do a COLA next year to do it. I mean, that's, that's our prerogative next year.
Like I said, we're, then that was like the, I guess maybe the buzzkill would be the term when I said to David, and I said, well, I could see this, like, at year three, what if you had, you know, and just name, like you said, a storm, whatever, boom. And now it's, you know, and then they just, they stop, and then like it get, because it's moving to, to get to where it needs to be because it's behind. And then if we stop, if you got, I come off the board, Mike comes off the board, Ellen comes off the board, and you get, you know, I'm just saying that where David said year three doesn't exist a lot of times. That's, that's, that's all.
That's why I asked about year four. It doesn't exist either. No.
You know, it'd be nice, Kevin, is if we can, if we can address and have people understand the sales taxing again, because a lot of people last year were given misinformation. They thought it was a tax on their personal property, a tax on them, and they were voting against it. What they didn't understand, it was a sales tax really to, for people who buy things, especially tourists when they come through, to help the county find some additional funds without having to tax the citizens.
And we can't tell people, hey, your taxes are going to go up if it's not passed.
No, but the sales tax would give us, what was it, like 2.5 million? What was it?
1.5 to.
1.5, excuse me.
Uh, I think, I believe it was over $2 million.
Yeah, well, I think it was like 2.4 or something.
Yeah, it had the potential to.
Which we could use any way we want to.
Oh, no, I mean, like I said, it's, if somebody's watching this meeting, it's, it would be very crucial to support it.
Well, that's why.
If you had explained it that $100 would be 25 cent would have been the tax, people couldn't under, could have understood it. But instead, it was out there on social media. It's an additional 25 cent tax that's going on your ad valorem tax.
On your property taxes.
If you'd have said, it's $2.50 on $1,000, people could understand that. But the way it was explained, nobody could understand.
And they thought it was a person.
They thought it was 25 cent tax instead of a .25. So.
I think our budget, of course, you know, is, we're paying people with the brunt of the budget. You know, we got a lot of people that work, but now this year, is it five percent, five positions that we're cutting? We're not.
Five and a half.
Five and a half.
Yes.
And, and the attorney has to work on Sundays?
I heard that.
Okay, I'm going to ask again.
All right, what was the number on the Waves? Kind of, is that what, I mean, is that the number that you put out there? For what they're saving us?
It's not in there right now, unless.
I mean, before we move forward, I'm just.
It's 50 is what everybody said.
She said 60.
No, you keep saying 60.
He said 60.
No, I said 50.
Oh, I thought she said 60. She said they saved us 60.
Oh, and I said.
It was approximately 60 that.
We saved.
We saved by not putting a bus over there. That's where you got the 60.
But Selena's number was 50. I thought it was 60. I'm sorry.
That was a suggestion.
I thought you had said 60.
That was my suggestion, yes.
And they would have to agree to the terms, which I believe there was an email where they did?
Tony implied that they agreed.
Tony said that they agreed to it.
Yes.
Yeah.
And as far as the schools, the supplement for the schools, the number was, we factored in, correct me if I'm wrong, more so they would clear the five-hundred?
That's correct.
So, it was six-hundred and something?
Six-hundred and eighty-four or eighty-seven dollars or something, so that they would actually clear the extra five-hundred dollars. Wish we could have done more.
Oh, yeah, you got a daughter that's a teacher. My sister?
Yep, but as I said, we got that one-point-eight million dollars of a new school. Nobody's talking about that.
You mean to tell me you want to, you want to plan for the future?
Yeah. I'm saying I'm not Santa Claus. There's a, there's a limit to what we can do.
Well, you can hit them with, uh, the Ric Flair instead and be like, woo, that's all you're getting.
Well, let's move the discussion forward, Mr. Chairman.
I'd love to.
Wait, before she makes a motion though, why I have to walk out of there?
Right, we, we need to have that discussion. So, I'll make a motion to, um, recuse Commissioner McCord from the discussions of the sheriff's budget as well as the implementation of the, uh, pay study.
Have a motion. Have a second?
I can't second my own to remove myself.
Yeah, the, the, of the entire pay study or just reflecting the sheriff's department?
The pay study. The implementation of the pay study, which affects Commissioner McCord.
I think, and like I said, if I did the formula rate, I think it's like...
Am I correct? Is that not the appropriate motion?
Correct.
Thank you.
I might be able to get a...
That's correct.
We have an appropriate motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Mr. McCord, you can...
Let me take a quick, good, go.
See if you can find a up-to-date Diet Pepsi.
It's all good. Hey, we're trying to save.
They don't, they don't agree, you know? So, I guess they're gonna decide how to do it without him?
So, if we had the full board here, we would have to recuse another board member, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Correct?
Possibly, yes.
Yep. He would have had to disclose his possible conflict.
Okay.
So, just for our clarification, you all are going to decide which, uh, implementation that we are moving forward with. So, there was the implementation that was presented and manager proposed, and then there was the implementation that was shared with you.
The amended implementation is the one.
Correct. Okay, so, that, that's the one that you all are recommending or would like to move forward with?
That's, that's my preference.
Moves people quicker.
It does move people quicker.
Okay, um, so, just to reiterate, across all funds, that's one-hundred forty-four thousand three-hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Um, in Fund Ten, that's seventy thousand one-hundred and twenty-three dollars. Um, and, uh, and we, we can go through Ocean Sands and TDA again, but, uh, Fund Sixty, which is Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District, that's eight-hundred-and-eighty-one dollar increase. Um, and then Fund Fifteen, which is Tourism Development Authority, that is four-thousand seven-hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents.
But this moves them a little faster.
Uh, it, it recognizes, uh, service beyond, or time and position beyond eight years. That's correct.
And I do want to add one thing that, um, Commissioner Jarvis was discussing. That meeting we had the other night, Raleigh is actively looking at sales tax monies from counties
That's correct.
to divert to Raleigh, which means we may lose some of that funding when they pass a budget.
Right now, it's two percent we get.
They are looking, the federal government, North Carolina is one of ten states where local governments share in Medicaid. And if the federal government cuts Medicaid, it comes to the states, and then Currituck County will have a larger Medicaid portion that will have to pay. And the same with SNAP, which I don't know what, what that acronym, supplemental nutrition and...
Assistance program.
Yeah, assistance program.
Have we got the...
Same thing. We're one of ten states that if the feds cut that, that comes down on the counties too. So, we're looking at some little choppy waters coming ahead of us. I just want to make sure everybody remembers that. That was at that meeting. So, with that, what does the board wish to, to do?
Okay, you just talked about the things. Are we not going to talk about waves and make sure that's in there? Is that when he goes back in?
Not right now. We're, what we're talking about specifically
Okay.
is the sheriff's budget and the implementation of the pay study.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would recommend holding kind of a mock vote on those two items. And then, when Commissioner McCord returns, then you can vote on the entire budget.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the pay implementation, uh, that the manager sent in an email dated, uh, the second of June, uh, with the changes to the proposed adopted budget, uh, that, uh, rewards time in position beyond eight years and the sheriff's budget as proposed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, that motion carries.
Now we can bring Kevin in.
Now we can bring Kevin back.
Kevin, you're not getting the pay raise. Sorry, buddy.
Yes, he is.
He's taken three phone calls since he's...
Sorry, Kevin.
Now they're solving the problem on the phone, right?
I'll have a couple phones. I'll leave here if somebody wants to answer them.
No, thanks. Okay, so, the board has tentatively approved the pay study with the updated figures that, uh, the manager provided us on June second, along with the sheriff's budget as proposed. Now, we're going back to the full budget. And the full budget, I understand you want to include the fifty thousand for the wave school. Is there anything else that was not accounted for?
And the, the schools, was the, what was the number again? I just want to write...
Six something, six...
You mean for the supplement?
Yeah, what was the exact? Six-eighty-something? Is that what you said?
Six-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars.
Sure, okay. I just am writing that down as well.
That makes it even five-hundred then.
Mm-hmm. And you did say that you had discussed the emergency food funding for Meals on Wheels, and we don't need to put additional monies in the budget for that.
That's correct. The senior services director felt like there was, uh, appropriate funding within that budget.
And they would handle that.
That's correct.
And I'm on the senior board, so if it comes up, we'll make sure.
Yeah, and I'll also just remind you, you, at our, uh, most recent meeting, you all received updated budget ordinances that reflected the changes that were shared, um, from manager proposed to board adopted. So, those changes would be included in
Right.
the, the budget that's before you for consideration this evening. Um, I do want to point out, we discovered a, an entry error in the communications budget, which is one-zero-five-three-five in the, um, overtime line. Unfortunately, uh, not in our favor, uh, but the, it appears that a, one was left off, so the number that is actually in the budget is, uh, just under twenty-five thousand dollars, and it should be one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
What page is that again?
That's, let's see.
Oh, my goodness.
What page did you say?
I have not yet. Just one moment.
I didn't bring my book in. I've looked at it. I've looked at it a lot of times.
It's on page, um, there it is, eighty-nine. Thank you. Yep. Uh, well, you actually won't see it there because it's not broken out. So, if you go into the appendix, you would see it in the appendix.
Into the appendix?
And the reason for that is to cover opens?
Overtime.
I know it's overtime.
They have scheduled overtime.
Well, they've scheduled overtime.
Instead of hiring someone.
Well, it, it's based on their shift and the hours that they work. They are forty-hour-a-week employees and they are scheduled for
Oh, it's in the appendix.
greater than forty hours a week. That, the way their schedule falls, and I'm, I'm gonna mess it up, I may defer to Melissa. Uh, but they, there are certain works, weeks, that they work greater than forty hours, and I believe the, the following they work...
There's some weeks where they work forty-eight and some weeks where they work thirty-six.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and they're, and some of that is, or, I mean, are there, they're short three or four people, correct? So, some of it might be because they're short a couple people.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, what the chairman said.
Communications.
That's gonna be... Page, appendix.
Okay, it's, uh, appendix page fifty-three.
You only go to sports and put it on red for that one?
Fifty-three, okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, so...
You said fifty-three?
Correct.
So, the salary should be...
It's, it's line, uh, ten-zero-five-three-five-five-zero-two-one-zero-zero overtime.
Okay, so you said that should be one-twenty-five, one-ninety-four?
A, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And not one.
Oh, yeah.
I got you.
Okay.
Rebecca, one more time. What, what line was it again?
It's the second line and the, the number five-zero-two-one-hundred is the object.
You said appendix fifty-three?
Appendix page fifty-three.
Obviously, I'm looking at the wrong appendix then.
Okay.
That's what I'm at, yeah.
What else?
Um, I also just wanted to call your attention to a change in the master fee schedule. There was a miscommunication and the, um, it's, it's an administrative change. The meter size that's referred to on the current master fee schedule is a five-eighths meter, and it should be a three-quarter inch meter rather than a five-eighths.
That's not much, just off a little bit.
Draw your attention to that. It's just a, uh, administrative change. Um, and then there will be, we can talk about it again in the TDA budget, but, uh, we were, received the twenty-thousand-dollar grant from Amateur Sports, uh, for the dugouts at Maple Park.
Right, I saw that.
So, there are additional costs to complete that project, which will be funded out of occupancy tax.
That field, that field gets used
A lot.
more in the last two years than it's ever been used. I mean, like, there's, there was somebody out there with their daughter yesterday practicing for like four hours.
It would be interesting for us to get an update on how much revenue that does generate.
Sure, absolutely.
Hey, can I ask, since we're in a meeting, one thing too, can I ask a question? Was the report good for, for May for the sewer and...
We're on the budget. Wait till we get done with the...
I just thought of it. I'll ask that at the end.
That is important.
Two people asked me that today, so...
I, I get it, but let's finish the budget first.
That was a Kevin moment, sorry.
Yes.
So, the, the number for that project is, the additional funding is thirty-one thousand dollars. So, just so you have that.
Okay.
Um, and am I understanding correctly that you would like to appropriate fifty thousand dollars for wave school, or is that still up for discussion? Okay.
Four-hundred and five, okay.
All right, any other questions?
Do we need additional money set aside for air museums? You know, we've talked about them being open possibly on weekends. Do we need additional funding for that?
That's gonna be occupancy tax funding.
That's tourism development.
Tourism.
That, that would be funded through the TDA.
Okay.
And, and I would recommend that we get the operations manager position in place and, and have that position evaluate and assess what's going on in Historic Corolla Park and make recommendations.
Anything else?
Before we vote, so I can, just to be sure, I cannot vote on the, what y'all voted on when I voted. But I can vote on the whole budget.
Now you can vote.
Yeah, because it was approved without you in here.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we're gonna let you make a motion for approval.
All right, you can do it and I'll second it.
Yes, you're voting on the whole thing now.
Go ahead and make the motion, Kevin, and I'll second it.
Are we done?
Yep.
All right, look, uh, all right, I'll move for approval for the budget as
Presented.
Presented with all the additions and amendments added.
Right. Okay, we have a motion for approval.
You said you'd second it.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
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 Oppose. Thank you, dear Lord. It's done. Okay.